For the first time in a long time, I'd like to say good evening. Welcome to the regular business meeting, June 12th, 2025. It is now approximately 5:30, and we're going to open this meeting in prayer. Dear heavenly Father, we thank you for this day. We thank you for the opportunity that we can come and assemble and better our township with these meetings, and we hear from the public. We ask that you be with this meeting and give us wisdom, in your name, amen. Sir, would you open us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Everybody enjoying this three days of nice weather before the rain comes? And then just get your motor back out. If I could have a roll call, please?
Yes, sir. Mr. Fleishman?
Here.
Mr. Blevins?
Here.
And Mr. Lees is excused.
I don't know if he's running late. He may be here. Let me just put his chair back. Do we want to?
We can do the opening. Now, it's just giving him a couple of seconds.
Not a problem. A little business, approval of the meeting minutes, May 29th, 2025, regular meeting, and a special meeting for June 5th, 2025. If there's no questions on either meeting, I would ask for a second.
I'll second it.
Now that I have the second, I would ask for a roll call, please.
Mr. Fleishman?
Yes.
Mr. Blevins?
Yes.
And Mr. Lees is excused.
Sir, do you want to take over the meeting?
Sure. Okay. So I just want to say that tonight, we're going to present the Franklin Township Trustee Scholarship Fund for the second time in its existence, and we have our recipient here. But before we get started, I'm sorry.
Stand right over here so they can see.
I just wanted to make sure that everybody knows that there was no tax dollars went into this scholarship fund. These are all private donations, and I wanted to let everybody know that before we get started. And so at this time, I would like to welcome Brandon Sloan. Thanks for coming out. This is grandmother Melody. And what we're going to do here, step out of here, sir, just right there. You stand there, and John can see. And so Brandon was, won the award at the Franklin Heights Assembly, and he received this letter telling him that he won the scholarship for this year and everything, and there was instructions to follow on there that he had to do, turn in, that he had entered a college and everything. And we're proud to announce that he'll be attending the Ohio State University this year. And so I would like to present him with this certificate from the trustees and everything. And we really appreciate you coming out tonight and everything. And well, without any further ado, here is your check for $1,000, and put it to good use. And we really do appreciate it. Not a small task, you know that. Sure, you were right by his side many times and everything. In this day and age, with the career pressure and everything that's going on, it's a huge accomplishment, and I just wanted to say congratulations and good luck at Ohio State. Like John told you earlier, stop back and see us. I just wanted a little side note. Last year, when we did this for the first time, I wore my black and gold, and our fellow trustees, my fellow trustees are both Westland grads, but I got to congratulate Johnny who wears black tonight. We're all in colors. So John, you have anything, sir?
Would you mind letting people know what your major is and what you're, where you're headed and where you're going to go and what your future looks like?
So my name is Brandon Sloan. I'm majoring in herb sciences at OSU, and I hope to return there to get my master's and later my doctorate in paleontology. I hope to be traveling around the world, going to various big sites, and doing the jobs for paleontology, on earth, and two fossils.
Oh, there you go. I was going to say, I didn't ask, what? It's the fossils. So thank you very much. We appreciate it.
So we're going to jump into the meeting. You can either welcome or stick around, or you can leave, whatever you choose. Okay?
My phone, my brain, I thought it might have been.
I looked at mine, too. We're good.
Okay, just wanted to make sure. Okay, we're going to, we've got that, we do, we have anyone from, I'm going to say something here about that, we don't have anyone from the sheriff's office to give a report, but I do want to let everybody know, I don't have the exact totals and numbers in front of me. But Lieutenant Ratliff was able to facilitate from the county at no cost ballistic helmets, the shields, and there was at no cost. And it was basically by having a good working relationship, and they were talking and said, hey, we happen to have these items, and they chose Franklin Township as a place that, you know, could you use these? And absolutely, we can fit them in. Hopefully, we never need them. But it was nice that the county did that, and to the sheriff, I thank you very much for doing that for us. So we don't have anyone to give a report for that. So we're going to move on to our Patty Spencer. She's not here?
No, not here.
Wow, okay. There's 10 minutes.
The sheriff's office.
Okay. So we're moving, this is going to be a short meeting, not just because of her, I'm just saying, because I'm looking at this, and I don't have anyone here for, the lieutenant is not in tonight, so we're going to go past him unless, sir, does he have anything for us?
No, sir.
Okay, so we don't have the update from them. So we're going to go to the fire chief. This is Chief Arnold.
Shoot, I had statistics for you, and I think I left them at my desk. I did. All right, so roughly the same amount of runs as usual, a few less based just because one of the medics is typically out of service each day. I think it was 810 runs, 121 or so in the township. We had 11 building fires, four cardiac arrests. I don't think any of them came back, though, so I'll double-check those and get those numbers to you.
And then, you know, one of the things, if you could do, we all hear the numbers and stuff here, why don't we send that over to Nicole earlier and let her attach it to this? Because if people want to take that home, you know, they're paying attention, leaving out, write it down, but they may want to have something like that to take home.
Did we want to discuss levy possibilities or anything?
Sir, you're up. That we have the public here, and the public is the people that have voted for the levy or voted on the levy. Absolutely, speak whatever you have on it.
Just in running our initial numbers, we have three permanent levies that were voted on as far back, the latest one was 2008. They don't bring enough money to maintain much of a fire department, so there's a five-year temporary levy that we passed back in 2020 that we are running off of. It brings in about a million dollars worth of revenue. Even with that levy, if we just simply renewed it, that unfortunately wouldn't leave us much money to run much of a fire department either. So we will have to come back in November and ask for an additional levy of some sort. That's what we're still working out at this point. We still have a little bit of time. So if you have an opinion, or if you have reasons why you didn't vote for the last two, or reasons you think other people didn't vote for the last two, please let me know, let one of the trustees know, let Mr. Major know, let Nicole know, so we can work on that and try to find a way to fund a fire department that serves you guys and fulfills your needs.
Sir, at this time, I would like to open the floor. I'm going to stop right here since you opened that up. If anyone has any questions, suggestions, or comments, please raise your hand, and you'll be called on. Yes?
There's got to be another way, instead of taxing the taxpayers, because there's a lot of elderly that are on social security, and their taxes are going to go up. Isn't there a way, like you begin the sales tax?
Sir, I mean...
Open it.
I don't believe so. I don't believe townships have.
What I want to do, and I think a lot of people may not understood what this levy would have done.
Yeah, but the levy did incur new taxes, infringe taxes on taxpayers.
Well, one would be going off. If we would have passed this past levy, it was called a township-wide levy, and what a township-wide levy is designed by a federal, our federal judge passed that we could do this, anyone that has annexed into the city of Columbus, I was not going to say Columbus, but enter into the city or municipality, they would have to pay our taxes, too. So give you an example, you live close to me, you know what Hague Avenue looks like?
Yes.
Okay, so that corner up there behind Johnny sold for about 100, can someone help me with that? Brenda, 100,000 for eight acres?
I think it was a little bit more than that.
Okay, so let's just say 150,000. So you take a piece of land that was probably paying taxes on 35,000 to 40,000. When it got annexed, we no longer get that money. When they're done, and Brenda, help me out, when we're done, when they get their apartments up, it's going approximately 3 million?
Oh, every bit of it.
Okay, let's just say 3.5 million.
It's like 3 million.
Okay, so let's just round it off, 3.5 million. 3.5 million dollars. Now, think of your own home value, what you pay. Now, we just lost 3.5 million dollars of tax paid money. So if you did the figures on 3.5 million dollars, they, we would have, if it would have stayed in the township, we would have collected that for the fire levy. What does that mean? All of us pay a little less. Now, you got to understand this, there is a cap. We cannot collect more than 5.2 million dollars for the fire. So what does that do? As soon as you hit 5.2, and you still have this other money, downtown, with the auditor, they figure it out, and all of a sudden, everybody has to pay less because they can't collect over 5.2. So even the numbers that we saw hypothetically, yes, it looked as if we were going to pay more. However, you can't tax, or the stated value on the property until they're done is only 40,000. Now, we're looking at 3.5 million. This is just one area. If you look at the different areas on Hague Avenue that they're building, the old horse farm, that's another 4.8 million. If you look at Trebeau Road that used to be St. Margarita, all those properties that we lost, each of those houses, I'm going to guess 200,000. Now, each of those are going to be worth 3 million apiece because they're developing that. So to give you one more tad bit, when Westland Mall is done, it is expected to be 1 billion dollars in real estate. So think if you had to pay, does anyone know what your tax bill just on fire on 1 billion dollars is? 9.2 million dollars. Now, I just told you, we cannot collect more than 5.2 million dollars. So how much do you think you would have to pay for fire levy? The beauty thing about the township-wide levy, if we get eaten up, they have to pay. Now, if we pass a regular levy, like a time levy or something, every time we lose a piece of property, we will not be able to collect that money at all. So on this special levy, to give you an example, another one, I know we're talking about fire. Think if we switched our levies, it's basically the language, if we switch the police over to this type of levy, hypothetically, with the monies that could come in from the unencumbered, is that what you call it, sir? Unincorporated area, you could almost double the police force and not have to pay more. So as things build up around us, that only means more money coming in the pot. Each of us would end up coming down. But there is no way for the auditor to be able to say, this is exactly what you're going to pay, because this is an empty field, this is a house that's worth 200,000, this one's worth 100,000, but now they're not there, and you have all these big apartments and high rises going up. So I say this to try to get people to understand the importance of a township-wide levy versus a time levy versus, because a time levy is just that. And this is my opinion, when you put a time levy on, that is something like, say, for instance, we need a fire truck, we need a police car, we need a new building, it gets paid for in the five years, and then that goes away. At the beginning of the doorstep, it looks as if we're going to be paying a whole bunch more, but you have to look down the road, and as people annex the township into the city, they can't do it and leave without still paying forever. They will have to pay the city of Columbus, and they will have to pay us as well. So if we, it's crucial, in my opinion, as one trustee, I'm not putting this on anyone else, but it is crucial for our township to protect its borders and to protect the future, because we will fall. We are going to fall because it's going to be too expensive to live in a township. We are already, as you're going to hear, going to lose one station. It's just, how many of you played the pixie sticks as a kid? It's just a matter of time, because it's business. It's about dollars that we have to spend, and our fire department is the lowest paid but the happiest. We don't pay as much as Columbus and et cetera. You hear, well, you take all these runs into Columbus. Yes, but we're also, these gentlemen get paid for 24 hours of service. Either they can sit there or take other runs and produce approximately 1 million dollars for the fire fund. The monies that are collected for the fire fund cannot be used for anything else other than just fire. Your fire levy cannot be used for anything but just fire. So I believe if, and this is me, and I'll shut up, I believe if we educated the people just as I tried to explain it exactly what it means, maybe people would take another look going, yes, on paper, I'm going to be paying 500 more a year, and some of the expensive areas might be paying 1,100 more a year, but look around at how much ground and stuff is being eaten up. That was only worth 40,000, and now it's going to be worth 3 million dollars. So we have to look at it that way. It will protect our borders. There is no reason, no reason, in my opinion, that the property in St. Margarita and those properties should have been annexed. If they want to develop it, develop it here. Develop it in Franklin Township. The tax paid here, we have our fire here, we have our police here, but municipalities and cities have the ability to do tax abatement, and I don't know if this is the case, this is my opinion, but as a business person, if someone's saying, I'll give you a five-year tax abatement, what does that mean in encouraging you to build in that? Your trustees are just that, trustees. They manage your dollars that come in, that you pay and I pay every day. We sit here, we look at our budgets, we vote yes or no on things. We can't offer that, so we're a little bit different. Chief, I'm very passionate about this, and I apologize for taking off on tangents. Please continue. The floor, okay, I'm going to close the floor if there's no other questions, because I took over, I apologize. Okay, the floor is closed, sir.
So to answer your question that you asked about it being changed, how the levy is done, between now and November, this board doesn't have the ability to change that. That's been put into place, how these levies are settled. We have to worry about what's going to happen between now and November, under the rules that are in place now. So now I'm going to ask Bob to share with you some information that he shared in a meeting on Tuesday. So we have run the township-wide levy twice, and it's failed, correct?
Yes, sir.
And if this levy fails, again, the next levy, would you explain to the folks what you told us the fire department is going to look like if we fail one more levy? What's it going to look like for the people in the township? What kind of fire department are they going to have?
We'll basically be able to provide one engine, minimally staffed, and most likely, because we can't provide EMS, a mutual aid agreement, so we'll then be unemployed, and therefore, we will have no EMS coverage other than a fire truck, first responder. We won't have any ambulance come take you to the hospital. You'll have a fire truck that can come do first aid, but they know where to get you to a hospital.
And so why doesn't the city come in, then, if there isn't one?
Because if we can't help them and provide them something mutually, like mutual aid is based on, you're closer, you can provide this for my people, we're closer over here, we'll provide that for your people. So if we don't have anything to provide, they're going to cancel those mutual aid agreements because it's not mutual, they're just aiding us.
So I just needed for that information to get out so people know, people that are watching this at home, realize where we're at, whether the board decides to go, I'm not saying I'm for or against any of them, because we've not reached that point where I have to do a vote.
Right.
Then to the meetings, we've talked about it a lot, but I just need it to get out there, because that's like shocking, that we could go to that if we make a missed call and we can't get people to vote to pass the levy. Everybody needs to know where we're at. So that's all I have, sir.
Thank you. And one of the things that I really like about this board, either way, one of us trustees, and this is what we should be doing, is working for the better good of the township and the residents. Each of us have different ideas of which way, and that's why the system is set up the way it works and how we vote. The last thing I forgot to mention about a township-wide levy, you do away, if it passes immediately, every levy you had before goes away forever. You cannot collect both. If you remember back when the first one ran, the idea of doing this, the casino sent out 8x10 and 11x14 overnight when they got word of it, supposedly, excuse me, it was a pack, and it had a lady on there looking grumpily, and says, your taxes will go up He's, whoever sent that was 100% correct, if you would have kept the old levies on there, but by law, you can't. We cannot, as trustees or a township, we are governed by Franklin County. They will not allow us to collect it. Franklin Township doesn't collect a dime. The state auditor collects it and then allows us to have the money, and then we distribute it amongst where it goes. So one last question to you, sir, and then I'll let you continue. Do you by any chance remember the first time we ran a township-wide levy, how much it failed by versus the last time we ran it?
I do not. The first time was COVID, so it was the election that was right in the mix of COVID, it was at May of '21.
I believe it was 370-some, 300-some it lost by, and this time it was 33.
In November, it was 130.
Yeah, so it's getting close. The reason that I brought that up is, I believe, the education that you guys have went out and educated people, there, it's obviously made a difference.
How did you do that?
What's that?
Door-to-door, the old-fashioned way.
Door-to-door, letters, social media, township media, meetings.
So, sir, I'm going to move on, give you the floor. I apologize, and thank you for your time.
Yeah, so just moving on in business affiliated to the failure of that levy, we have to lay off six firefighters with the ending of the safer payment grant that was providing 10 firefighters at one time to our township and funding those. That funding is no longer available, and so it's time to move on and lay off those gentlemen and send them on to different pastures.
This is one of the hardest parts, sir, that we have to do, is what we do here is to, to do that, because we're working backwards, not forwards, and I hate it, but there's not much you can do. What would you need from us, sir?
Just the resolution, approving the layoffs.
You good, chief?
Yes, sir.
Good to read this? Okay. It's Resolution 2025-079. Excuse me, it's Resolution authorizing the elimination of six full-time Franklin Township firefighters. Whereas the Board of Trustees of Franklin Township, Franklin County, Ohio, has reviewed the current financial status of the township and the fire department budget, and whereas due to ongoing budgetary constraints, the board has determined that a reduction in workforce is necessary to ensure the continued financial stability of the township and the provisions of essential services. And after careful consideration, the board has identified the need to eliminate six full-time firefighter positions within the Franklin Township Fire Department. Therefore, it being resolved by the Board of Trustees of Franklin Township, Franklin County, Ohio, that the board hereby approves and endorses the elimination of six full-time firefighter positions for the Franklin Township Fire Department due to those budgetary constraints. The affected personnel are as follows. Cole Cruvort, is that how you pronounce it, Cruvort? Evan Snyder, Preston Reese, Bryson Partlow, Thomas Hilliard, and Andrew Schmidt. Each of the aforementioned firefighters shall be provided with a 30-day layoff notice in accordance with the applicable laws, policies, and procedures. The Board of Trustees extends its sincere gratitude to those firefighters for their dedicated service and unwavering commitment to the residents of Franklin Township. We thank them for their contributions and wish them continued success in all their future endeavors. Being further resolved that all formal actions of this board concerning and related to this resolution were passed in an open meeting of the board, and that all deliberations of the board and any of its committees are resolved in such formal actions, were in meetings open to the public in compliance with all legal requirements, including Section 121.22 of the Ohio Revised Code. Being further resolved that this resolution shall be declared emergency and be in full force and effective immediately upon its adoption. I have no choice.
Understood.
If there's no further questions on the matter, I'd ask for a second.
I'll second it.
Here in a second, I'd ask for a roll call.
Mr. Fleishman?
I have no choice. Yes?
Mr. Blevins?
Yes.
And Mr. Lees is excused.
Sir, I'm sorry. It's the hardest thing. I know how hard it is sitting here, and you had 20-some guys out there knocking on doors and trying to keep their hope up, to keep their jobs, to keep the people safe, and now we have to hand them this slip to say thank you for your service. It's very, I know it's tough for me to do what I need to do. I can't imagine what tomorrow morning's like for you. So I thank you for your service. No one wants to go through this. What we've done is just now not only change the services that we can offer in Franklin Township, but the expense that insurance companies are going to do to us next, because they base your rates on a fire department, and whether it's volunteer or if it is full-time, if it's one station or two stations, how close it is to you and what their runtime scheduling is. So thank you. And, sir, do you have anything else?
I do not.
Okay. At this time, I'm going to open the floor for any questions.
So if you guys run another levy and it passes, does that mean that they'll consider hiring back people or adding?
With, I'll let you offer that, sir.
So just based on the risk of failing...
So just based on the risk of failing that levy come this November, I don't think we can ever have two stations again. We have to try to just fund the one and keep that one running so we don't have to do this again. We had two shots to keep two stations and we lost not that much, both times.
Yes.
Do you know what station you will be closing?
It's to be determined. We were going to have some discussions about that this evening, but I don't think it's fair without Jim here.
That's what I was going to say, Bob. It was not on the agenda, but we had spoke on Tuesday that we were going to discuss that, if not make a decision tonight. I came with my stuff ready to go, but I don't think we should do it. So I think we need to plan another meeting. I just looked up there at the calendar. The next actual meeting is the 26th, but I think it probably needs to be done before that.
What I would like to do, sir, is I see a lot of people in this room. I would like to do it if we make our next meeting in the evening so that all parties of the public could, that could be here because I see faces that are here that are normally not here.
I will be on vacation with my family on the 26th. I will not be here.
Okay, so, how about if...
I can have a representative here if needed.
Do we need to do it? How soon do we need to have that?
July 12th, the last day for those gentlemen, so we'd have to make the decision before July 12th.
So I want to know why we don't schedule something in for the evening next week before he goes on. It doesn't have to be a regular meeting.
So if we have a special meeting, because I'd love to have the public available, and I like the evening, because like I said, I see faces here that, and my assumption is that everyone that's in here, has it been easier for you guys in the evening or does it make it, okay, because I want every, this is important. This is our fire, this is our fire station, and this is important to hear which station. I'm sure we're going to open the floor to hear from different, the public, because we're making a choice that's going to be my second hardest choice. I've never closed a station as long as I've been here in 12 years. Yes, I've seen people get laid off, and yes, I've seen people come back. But to actually close the doors for the last time on a station is going to be very difficult. So how about after this meeting, you get with Steve? We'll check with the other trustee and we'll try to set up a time for the meeting. Is that good with you for evening?
Yes, I'll make myself available whenever. I know there's a holiday next week too. But what we should do is I know you definitely have ends with the news people. I have a person that I've been able to work with a little bit. We should try to get them to do a story on it so they can get around that this meeting is going to happen. Let's just arbitrarily say we're going to do it on the 17th or the 18th, and we can get the news crews to go out because I think the information Bob gave out about how dire it's going to get if we do not pass some kind of a levy and we can get more people here and fill this room up and hopefully educate people and get more enthusiasm or we need to get the information out that what the dire straits are going to be if we don't pass a levy. That's what's important.
I agree. I agree 100%.
So I don't know if James can make it or not. I say we make a date and we do it. So that's my opinion, so.
Also, if you'd start reaching out with some of the people that we've done stories with, I'll do the same. And if we get that going now, they can work on the story and let them see exactly what's going on. Because more of the public that is here, you know, I'm just, some people say, well, it failed by 33 votes and the people have spoken and et cetera. I will never ask someone to raise their hand on how they voted on it. I'm just glad they voted. So we had approximately 500 and some votes out of 10,000 that voted. So just getting people in our community to vote is essential. I don't care if you voted no or you voted yes, it's just taking a stance that this is your community too. Let's all get out and vote. Anything else for us, sir?
Nope.
Do we want to get back? Do we want to set the date now, sir?
I'll set it up for the 17th at 5:30.
Bob, you busy on Monday? As you and I get together and we'll make another video from right here at this table like we've done two or three times. And that way, it'll at least be able to get out Monday. We'll get it right out there and we'll get it out Monday and Tuesday, okay?
Sounds good.
Okay. You want to do 10 o'clock here? Or do you want to check your schedule on Monday?
No, I'll be good. I just got to do payroll Monday morning, so I have to get it done by 10.
And we can go later.
No, no, no. I typically get down here right about 10.
Okay, I'll be here at 10. Yes, sir.
So this is the last chance. I'm going to close the floor. If there's no other questions for the fire chief? Here and now, no, go ahead.
Okay, you know, from what I heard, I never heard it explained the way you did.
Okay.
Why don't you make the video?
I'm going to.
And put it on.
I will do that. If we chose, see, a lot of this, and I got it.
It was not explained, nothing like that.
It sure wasn't.
No. And there's a lot of people who aren't on the internet that can get it. I think you should do a mailing of whatever you say on the video, go by a speech and then send that out when it gets closer. So people can not only hear it, they can see it, they can read it. Because it was not explained like that.
Mr. Blevins has been giving me ideas because he, for the first trustee I ever worked with, actually used YouTube and put videos together, and I'm like, wow, how powerful that is. And putting it out on Facebook and et cetera. So if we do choose to go that way, I will try to make it as short and as simple as possible and explain it the way that I did. And maybe if I do a video, I'll do it with a green screen so over my shoulder I will have photos of different areas and give an example of what that value property was and what it is now. And I would have better numbers to know exactly how much tax. Because like, for instance, the casino, I know the first time we ran a township-wide levy, they were going to pay 1.2 million if it would have passed. So what is 1.2 million out of a $5.2 million budget? It would have made a huge difference in what we pay. So now their property, though, the value of that property, we all see the hotel going up. When are they going to adjust the new value of it? And that would, so whatever that value is when it goes up. However, from my understanding, and I got to get, make sure that I am, got every I dot and every T, we, there is a limit on what we can collect up to 10 mil. So I have to get the exact number on the 10 mil, which still is a lot of money that is going to come back into this township. So I will make sure that I can do this and dumb it, I say for me. I always say dumb it down for me. I'm going to make it in plain English where people can understand it, as you said. And I think a lot of that, people really didn't understand it. I think a lot of people in the room today, I understand it. That is why it's a special levy that's called a township-wide levy. So with that, I'm closing. Is there questions?
And then after you do that, add at the bottom, have the, if you have questions, if you want to know more, come to a specific trustee meeting. Bob's here, he can explain, you can explain it more.
Yes.
For people who may not totally get the number situation. Also, you know, I've had a lot of people over the years when they say, you know, this levy doesn't pass, blah, 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 blah is going to happen.
Now we're seeing it.
Well, sometimes, you know, people are thinking they're just doing scare tactics. But, you know, what is happening right now is not a scare tactics, it's reality. And, you know, I think that the public should be made aware of, you know.
And that's why we'll get to media.
We didn't do this to scare you and to act like, well, if you don't give us the money, you know, this is what we're going to do. Well, you didn't give us the money and this is what we have to do.
The other hard part is we're going to lose good firefighters.
Yes, and we're going to lose the ability for somebody to come to my house if I got a fire.
Absolutely.
Or I have an emergency. That means a lot to me.
But once we pass a levy, it's already out there. Franklin Township, you work for them. It's hard to hire nutrition and hard to get those people back because they may go to another fire station where, like up Arlington or somewhere, where they don't have the budget problems that we have. And my goal as your trustee is to get us to where our levies work for us. Our levies are out there. You want to develop? Great. The more you develop, the more we make. So I get off that soapbox. So I'm going to close the floor if there's no other questions.
Thank you.
Here and now, I close the floor. Sir, I would like to, I skipped over that by mistake.
Before you go any further, I have resolutions for you to sign and I have documents that need to be sent to the firefighters that need to be signed as well.
Not only did I have to vote on it, now I have to actually sign it. This puts it so real when you put your signature on there. So this right here is one person. I just had to sign to say that they're... Oh, maybe we could have kept him.
Bob, remember at our Tuesday meeting, Mr. Lees said he would like to know when these were going out. Do you remember that conversation? So you may want to reach out to him and let him know that they're going out.
Unfortunately, he won't be able to sign them since he didn't vote on the resolution. You know, I, again, I don't blame the voters that voted no. They may, like a lot of people in here said, they didn't understand. It's kind of emotional to me because it's, I mean, I've never had to do that really before. And it's an actual, it's so, it's just so real because it's a person and it's part of the job that you have to do. I cannot not do it. So today's meeting is not, I'm not my normal self just because of it's being so real. I accidentally skipped over.
Just Brenda Fuller.
Yeah, I skipped over comments and Brenda, you want to come up? And Brenda, before you start, I want to say a few things. Brenda, as a resident here in Franklin Township, has worked tirelessly in her own community and other communities combating the annexing that we're seeing. She's graciously kept my phone open and letting me know. I go to meetings, I stand up, I speak. It is effective because we've been able to put them off to the point where they didn't buy the property, then they come back. So at different times, we won the battle, but we didn't win the whole war of it. The only way we're going to win this is if we can control our borders and quit letting it get ate up. But Brenda, go ahead.
Like you said, my name's Brenda Fuller. I live up in Moneyback. All started, we had developer going in behind me that was low-income, sitting in the city of Columbus. The problem is, they wanted to come up five feet to our property lines. So that's where my story started. And I was helping out up on Britton, you know, because they want, they actually do want to take all of Britton Avenue after they took Traboo. Well, excuse me, I've been working with a few attorneys that say that... Excuse me. I want to sneeze, but anyway, I've been working with a few attorneys that said that they would help us to keep the property in the township if we can get the schematics of the water and sewer lines that run down Hag Avenue. Now, this is, this is my suggestion to the board. I honestly believe we need to hire an attorney that deals with nothing but annexation and, you know, land development and that kind of thing so that we have a fighting chance. Because if we continue to lose property, our property taxes are going to go up. We can't have that because the less people there are that's paying this bill, you know, the levies and everything, that's all going to fall back on all of us because there's not going to be enough people to pay it. So if we don't do something now, rather than wait, there's a 2011 plan that is going to take all of Hag Avenue and annex it, including the houses that are in the little development there between the railroad tracks and Hag Avenue. That's a lot of property. They're already planning on 6,000 more apartment units over there now, you know? And there's no way that we have the traffic infrastructure for it. We don't even have grocery stores enough to supply that many people. And the developers don't want to set land aside. They just want to build it up, get as many apartments as they can out there, and we're the ones that have to suffer. You know, I'm sure that we have enough money in our general fund to at least try it with one property to stop the annexation. They're not even notifying the township the amount of days that they're supposed to notify them in advance. Am I correct, maester? So we have to do something, you know? I mean, I love our township and I want to keep it the township.
I'm going to hold you for a second. Do you have a problem with extending time? She's the only speaker.
No, I don't have a problem.
Go ahead.
Anyway, we need to do something. We can't continue to sit on our hands. You know, the trustees, they don't have time to go out and fight these individual things. That, you know, they're knowledgeable, but they don't have the law degrees to be able to fight the city of Columbus. And Columbus is after us. There's a 2011 plan. You can Google it, go online, look it up. That's what all they're planning on doing. And it's all in the township. And we need to have this attorney give us tips. We need to get a Jed in the township, you know? Hopefully someday, we can get a second fire department again. Because we will have, if we can fight this, you know, we'll have enough money coming in. Our taxes aren't going to go up if we can get tips. So I just want to put that out there because I really do care about the township and the residents of the township. I mean, I don't have to fight this, you know? I wanted to retire and be a homesteader, you know, grow my own food and have my own animals, that kind of thing. But then the developer ruined that for me. And I want to say thank you to John and Mike for all... And I want to say thank you to John and Mike for always taking my calls, you know? Anytime I call them, I'm like, hey, there's a meeting, you know? John's like, I'll be right there. Mike, Mike is learning about the zoning and the annexation and stuff, you know? I feed him information about it all the time. After I get back from a meeting, I'm so frustrated. And, you know, I do have contacts in the city of Columbus, you know, but I, they can only do so much. They're not a city council. City council doesn't want anything to do with this. Nothing. All they want is our money.
Where are they building at in Moneyback towards your property?
Oh, Twin Creeks. You know where Twin Creeks is?
Yes. So you live on Brookside?
I live on Brookside and the creek is, you know, behind my property and my house sits on a hill and I've had to bring in dirt because of all the vibrations. It was making my hill slide down to the bottom where my garden is, so, you know? I mean, this is crazy. This is affecting all of us, whether you believe it or not, whether you live on the north end, the south end. Whatever they do on the north end affects every lot of... Okay, that's all I got.
I want to answer.
Yes.
So I'm not opposed to looking into a lawyer for one-off, you know what I'm trying to say and everything? It may be nice to, no, it's not a secret how I feel about the township lawyers. I've brought this up in the past. So we may put out a finding out there to see if we can't get somebody that can handle it all, but to do a one-off, I'm sure not, I'm the last one that likes to put stuff on Mr. Mazur's plate. So if you have somebody in mind that we might be able to get, the board might be able to get some feel for what we're looking at money-wise and everything, I would definitely entertain a meeting to do something to that effect.
Absolutely. Yeah. We basically would need to sit down and look at the cost. And one of the things, you know somebody and et cetera, it would be nice, every attorney, if you have an attorney license, you have to do something pro bono per year. Would they help with some pro bono to Franklin Township? I can assure you, if we have the right smart person, male or female, and they actually smack the other side in the face and stop it, it's going to make a name for themselves. They have an opportunity to make a real name for themselves. So I do appreciate that. Thank you very much.
I do have a law firm in mind and I'll get with you after the name because I want to say it on camera because, you know, then the other attorneys, they'll go and...
Absolutely.
You know how they work.
Mr. Mazur, if I would, there was a lot of names that was thrown around here today. Can you explain just a little bit what a TIF is?
Yes.
It's tax increment financing. And we'll use Westland Mall as an example. And I appreciate all the comments Brenda said and you trustees know where my time...
Absolutely.
...is monopolized. You know my feelings and I would like to go out and talk to the business owners. We are in the early stages of a TIF. We are talking about CRA as well.
Right.
But if I had the opportunity to get from behind my desk and get out and talk to the necessary people, a lot of this could be in progress. So Brenda, I appreciate what you're saying.
Wes, do you need any help, Steve?
A TIF is tax increment financing. We'll use Westland Mall for an example. If we would TIF that property, let's say right now, the property taxes, to make it simple, at Westland Mall are $1,000 a year. We TIF that property. As the improvements to that mall begin, the property taxes increase. However, we don't realize the growth in those property taxes. They still pay the base rate of $1,000 a year. The money from the property taxes increase go back into the mall for infrastructure to improve the mall. Now you can have, there's a number of different tiffs you can have. The simplest one is called a 1075. The TIF lasts for 10 years. After 10 years, you get 75% of the taxes. The schools are made whole. The schools collect property taxes the whole lifetime of the TIF period. The biggest thing is you want to keep the schools out of the TIF because if you go to a 30-year TIF, then you have to get approval of the schools. So the common TIF is called a 1075. So after, for example, that 10 years, now the township gets to reap the rewards of the improved property. So it's a great tool. It does not prevent the township from being annexed though. It does not. Columbus could still annex that property. So...
Explain the JED in that area if we had a JED about the annexing.
Well, I don't...
If you have time to read.
The JED is a very complicated matter and I have talked to a number of the business owners here. And I'm going to try to make this as diplomatic as possible. Right now, the business owners are not interested in the JED. A JED entails, the township would collect 2.5% of an employment tax for each employee. The stickler is, and 2.5% is what the township is trying to do right now. You can adjust those rates any way the township would like. The stickler is that in the JED, the business owner has to pay 2.5% of their net income. They're not going to do that. They're not. And there are reasons why they're not going to do that, which I'm not going to go into. So that's the hiccup with the JED. And a lot of these businesses owners ask me, well, we don't want to talk anymore about the JED till we see what the mall is going to do. And I'm working with the mall owners. But again, you're talking about people who are investing hundreds and hundreds of millions of dollars. You have to kind of be diplomatic with them and they've been great to work with, but they're not going to commit. They're not going to commit because they don't even know what they're putting on the So when you look at a township like Prairie, Prairie did it right. 12, 13 years ago, there was a tool called a JED-Z. It put that in the hands of the voters. So Prairie just did this JED zone. So all the businesses in Prairie Township have to pay because the voters said, yeah, we like this. Business owners didn't have a say. So now Prairie is reaping in all this revenue because 12 years ago, they said, yeah, this is the way to go with JED-Z. The township here just missed the boat on that. And that's why you see such great growth in Prairie. And we're kind of, we're working hard to keep the township afloat here.
Thank you, sir. I wanted you to be able to explain it. One of the things, many years ago, it was very difficult to get the board all in line to be able to hire an administrator. And many, many years ago, I explained to the board what this man can bring in will pay his salary and then some. And it has. With the different grants that we got, the different monies that we've gotten, it's more than paid for his salary. Having a professional person that works on these things for many years, well, this is the first time that we've really had an administrator to run the day-to-day operations at a township. Your township trustees sit behind this desk and we vote on the things that are difficult and we sign the checks and every penny that comes through here. We are considered a part-time job of 20 hours. There's no way we put so much in. I mean, it's, when my phone rings, turn the hat around. I'm now a trustee and I love it. I have, I'm fortunate to have a job that I can do that and I can schedule during the day, meet with people and see different things. Mr. Blevins happens to be retired and I know he gives of himself, even to the point he meets people here on a regular basis and et cetera. And that's what your trustees should do. But to run the day-to-day operations, it's very difficult. Three trustees make decisions based upon what the needs are of the public. Not one trustee can actually sit in that office and run the township. So it is very vital to have a professional person run this. As you heard, we missed the boat on JED-Zs because they no longer do them. It's illegal to do those. We missed the opportunity way back when. It seems like we always show up just a little late and it's like, we get to the 99-yard line and then we fail, just like our levy. We got within 33 votes of getting that, but again, we get back up and we keep trying. So with that, we're going to move on unless you have something to say.
I just want to ask Mr. Mazur, and it can be as simple as yes or no. We need a viable fire department in order for you to go out and try to sell a JED or a TIF.
Oh, yes, sir.
Absolutely.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you. So let's move on to Mr. Stevens if you want to.
Okay, Mr. Stevens, you're up, sir.
Hello, everybody. I'll try to make mine as sweet and as short as I can. I've got some stats for you through today. 25 loads of brush, signage repaired throughout the township, removed a cut tree from the cemetery that went down in the big storm. We had a company come in and take that tree out and they stacked it all up by the fence. We was able to finally get all that out of there. Once it dried up enough to where we could get in there and get it. We picked up two loads of illegally dumped tires. I don't have a total amount, but I venture to say there was about 60-some tires, 65 tires total that we've gotten from the alleys. Working on guardrails. We completely rebuilt the monument down in the cemetery that you can see from the roadway. We went in and put some new landscaping timbers in there and a bunch of new mulch. Flagpole got blown down in the same windstorm, so we had to get a new flagpole and put that up. Been working boom mow in all of our alleys. We've got down into the triangle we're over in Broad Lawn, working on some things now. We've mowed the cemetery a couple of times, hauled gravel and we graded the area for the new maintenance shop. We've hauled in quite a few truckloads of gravel and made it so when a contractor come in to build the shop, everything was pretty much close to graded we needed to have. We had a huge tree fall across Havis, got called in, had to come in and take care of that. We've sent out 20 more mow letters. I think we're at an 84 of them total right now. We mowed 10 more, House Bill 50 properties, township right of ways. We've put down 12 ton of blacktop in potholes and alleys. We're scheduled to do more on Monday, but with this rain coming, I think that's going to back us up a little bit. We repaired a storm drain down in Briggsdale, picked up a couple of dead animals and took them to the dump.
I am, are you said everything?
No, that's not...
Okay.
That's not all. That's just, that's just my stats right now. Building update, as you all probably see when you pulled in, the shell is up and now we're moving on to the contractors. I've set up meetings with the plumbers that have put in bids. Want to get together and make sure that everybody's doing apples for apples on the bids. So I got a meeting set up Monday morning. I'll meet with the first one at 9:00 Monday morning. But everything's moving along real well. Actually, we're extremely happy with the shithole right now and everything is moving along rather well.
So far, has that building cost the taxpayers anything?
No.
Okay.
No. No. Other thing that I have, Mr. Mazur, I think you have the...
The new hire.
Yes, sir. You have the resolution that you want to read?
You all set for that?
Yes, sir. Whenever you're ready.
Jim, I have a resolution. Do you want to? Yeah, there you go.
I'm sorry, Steve. This is Chance Taylor. He's...
We better...
Oh, you called him out?
I'll shake your hand, sir. You'll stand over there. Okay.
Jave, would you hire him? Wow.
Hey, we'd like to get bulls that can work.
Comes from a good family.
Yes.
And he's a resident. That's right.
So we good, Jim?
Yes, sir. You're ready.
Makes me nervous standing how big he is. It's Resolution 2025-080. It's authorizing the hiring of Chance Taylor as a 2025 seasonal summer help in the road department. Be resolved by the Board of Trustees of Franklin Township, Franklin County, Ohio, that the Board hereby approves the hiring of Chance Taylor as a seasonal employee for the Franklin Township Road Department with an effective start date of June 16, 2025 at a wage of $20 per hour. Be it further resolved that all formal actions of this Board concerning and relating to this resolution were passed in an open meeting of the Board and in all deliberations of the Board, any of its committees have resolved in such formal action for open meetings to the public in compliance with all legal requirements, including Section 121.22 of the ORC. This resolution shall be declared emergency and be of full force effective immediately upon its adoption.
So these are the type of resolutions that are uplifting and nice to do. If there's no further question on the matter, I'd ask for a second.
I'll second it.
Here in the second, I will now ask for a roll call.
Mr. Flashman?
Yes.
Mr. Blevins?
Yes.
And now it's official. We now have a new summer help for Franklin Township.
There you go, sir.
Oh, yeah. Thank you for inviting me.
I'll agree with him.
That's for Chance?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, there we go, sir.
And that's pretty much all I had on the agenda.
I got a quick one for him. Jim, are we bringing back the committee once you meet with the people on the new building? Are we going to still operate under the committee?
Yes, sir.
I just wanted to bring it to your guys' attention that we would have to replace Chief Smith. And I don't know what Bob's schedule would look like or we may be able to get somebody else, but we would need to replace Byron.
I'd love to have Bobby on that.
If you have somebody or whatever. But I just wanted to bring it up.
Yes, sir, because we'll want you to look at the, excuse me, we'll want you to look at the quotes.
Yes.
Yeah.
And it's like I was, when you went to the doors explaining, I got a meeting Monday morning. I'm setting them up with the contractors coming that way. We knew everybody's doing apples to apples and we don't just have this one and this and that. I'm starting to meet with all of the different contractors.
Would one of you mind just making a statement to the greater audience that that building has not impacted the fire department and it's not money that the fire department could use to build that?
So what I'll do, yeah, this is where, you know, I said that it pays for itself when you have an administrator. And I'm going to have Mr. Mazur speak in a second on this, but when you can find grants and just as are, it might commend you, but I didn't mention this when you were up there, but the safer grant that he talks to that runs out, this is federal monies that he was able to keep six people going for the last few years to be able to try to keep us whole. But the building behind us that is being built is with $0 at this time. I don't perceive us needing anything to put into it of taxpayers' dollars. Sir, if you will mention how...
It's very simple. It's called ARPA money. It's the American Relief. I'm so used to the acronym, I can't even remember. American Rescue Plan Act. And it was federal, it was federal dollars. It's technically taxpayer dollars that were allotted to townships to help ease them through the COVID trying times. So what we were able to do as a township, we were able to take care of all the other departments with major purchases and needs that they had. But in the end, we were able to save for Jim's building because of my right, the original building was condemned.
Yes.
And you have a lot of taxpayer dollars invested in equipment.
Yes, sir.
That sits out.
Yes, sir.
So we were able to save about $400,000 of the ARPA money just for the new road garage to get the equipment out of the weather into the garage. So that's how, that's how that all came about.
Yes. So we have tax money, but it's federal tax money and not township residence money that we've taken in. So I don't want to misconception in people at home that if you wouldn't have built the building, maybe you could have had firefighters because that's not the money. The monies that we can spend for the fire department is the monies that we have for the levies. Each department has their own levies and they have their own budgets that they must maintain. Sir, the next question, I'm going to open up for any questions to the audience for you in a second and to my fellow trustee. I, as I pulled in, I've been getting so used to the temporary container that we have and the guys have really utilized that and have put their equipment and everything in there. I would love to get them... get a motion to see what it would cost to buy it and that we would just continue using it. So we're not tying up a bay with mowers and different things. And in the wintertime, it gives more room in their bay area. I don't know what one costs, but I would love to just pass a motion to entertain what would it cost if we bought that.
It's well organized in there. Really helpful.
Yeah. So what I would like to do is be it resolved by the Board of Trustees of Franklin Township, Franklin County, Ohio, that the board entertains the, Mr. Stevens, the road department to seek out what it would cost and report to the board if we were to purchase said container that we currently have. And if there's any questions on the matter or if there's no other questions on the matter, I'd ask for a second.
We're asking to get a quote.
Yeah, just a quote.
I'll second it.
And a roll call when you get a chance, sir.
It's funny that it matches the colors of the building. I mean, it blends right in.
Yeah. During construction, it's really helpful.
Mr. Fleishman?
Yes.
Mr. Blevins?
Yes.
And Mr. Leeser's excused. Okay. So at this time, I'm going to open the floor for any questions to our road department. Here and then, the floor is, the floor is closed. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Welcome, Chance. Thanks, Jan.
Yeah, thank you.
The building looks awesome.
It's been fun watching it go up.
Yeah, I know.
It's going to be nice with the building.
Move on a little quicker. Apologize once and for all.
That's all right.
Okay, moving on. Fiscal Department, Mazur will turn to you, sir.
Sure. All right. Thank you, Chairman. The first motion I have is to approve payroll reports as written as of June 12, 2025, be resolved by the Board of Trustees of Franklin Township, Franklin County, Ohio, that the board makes a motion to approve the employee payroll for the pay period May 18, 2025 through May 31, 2025, in the amount of $184,637.92. Direct deposit on June 6, 2025. Electronic vouchers 1511, 2025 through 1573, 2025. And the reports are attached.
Okay. If there's no further questions in said matter, I would ask for a second.
I'll second it.
I have a second, sir. Roll call when you're ready.
Uh, Mr. Fleishman?
Yes.
Mr. Blevins?
Yes.
Mr. Leeser's excused. Okay. Uh, the next I have is a motion to approve the Board of Trustees' payrolls written. And again, this is June 12, 2025. Be resolved by the Board of Trustees of Franklin Township, Franklin County, Ohio, that the board makes a motion to approve the trustees' payroll for the pay period of May 1, 2025 through May 31, 2025, in the amount of $4,901.50. Direct deposit ACH on June 2. Electronic vouchers 1447, 2025 through 1449, 2025. And the report is attached.
If there's no further question in, in this resolution, I'd ask for a second.
I'll second it.
I now have the second. I'd ask for a roll call when ready.
Uh, Mr. Fleishman?
Yes.
Mr. Blevins?
Yes.
And Mr. Leeser's excused. Then I have a motion to approve accounts payable again, June 12, 2025. Be resolved by the Board of Trustees of Franklin Township, Franklin County, Ohio, that the board makes a motion to approve accounts payable from May 21, 2025 through June 10, 2025, in the amount of $248,589.82. From electronic payment, ACH vouchers 1344, 2025 through 1586, 2025, and warrants 70783 through 70785. And again, the documentation is attached.
If there's no further questions, I'd ask for a second.
I'll second it.
With that second, I ask for a roll call when you're ready, sir.
Mr. Fleishman?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Blevins?
Yes.
And Mr. Leeser's excused. All right. Should I continue?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Um, Resolution 2025-081, approving the obligations authorized by the township administrator, period May 28 through 2025 through June 6, 2025. Whereas the Board of Trustees of Resolution 2021-130 authorized the township administrator to approve obligations of $10,000 or less on behalf of the township in accordance with Section 507.11 of the O R C. Whereas pursuant to the provisions of Section 507.11A of the O R C, all such obligations incurred by the administrator must subsequently be approved by the formal adoption of a resolution by the Board of Trustees. Therefore, be resolved by the Board of Trustees of Franklin Township, Franklin County, Ohio, that the obligations incurred by the township administrator as presented in Exhibit A here to attach and may part of this resolution are hereby formally approved. All formal actions of this board concerning and related to the adoption of this resolution were conducted in an open meeting of the board. All deliberations of the board and any of its committees resulted in such formal actions were conducted in meetings open to the public in full compliance with all legal requirements, including Section 121.22 of the O R C. This resolution shall be declared emergency and be in full force effective immediately upon its adoption.
If there's no further questions, I'd ask for a second.
I'll second it.
Now that I have the second, I ask for a roll call.
Uh, Mr. Fleishman?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Blevins?
Yes.
And Mr. Leeser's excused.
Do you want to start signing those or not?
Do you want us to start signing those, sir, or do you want to wait till the end?
However you want to do it.
If you want to pass them down.
I think it's this pile right here.
These are, these are all the motions.
Okay.
So these are all the motions.
And those are the-
These are the resolutions.
I just don't want us to leave and then not sign them.
I would never let you do that.
Okay. Sir, if you wish to carry on?
Um, I have Resolution 2025-082, re-enrollment in the 2026 group retrospective rating for B W C in the Ohio Township Association Retro Group. Be resolved by the Board of Trustees of Franklin Township that the board, the board has agreed to continue their enrollment in the 2026 Ohio Township Association Group Retrospective Rating Program effective July 1 for the enrollment period of 1/1/26 through 12/31/26. And whereas participation in the program, while not guaranteed, is subject to the group's performance and may save the township upwards of $24,898.40 after the service fee. The township administrator was authorized to sign the Township Association Group Retrospective Rating Program Agreement via Ohio Managed Care, AKA Sedgwick, as the third-party administrator for the Ohio Bureau of Workers' Compensation B W C Insurance Program dated April 2, 2025, in the exhibits attached. The township administrator is authorized to pay the service fee of $14,180 from the appropriations in the general fund. Be it further resolved that all formal actions of this board concerning and related to the adoption of this resolution were passed in an open meeting of this board and in all deliberations of this board, any of its committees have resulted in such formal action, were in meetings open to the public in compliance with all legal requirements, including Section 121.22 of the O R C. Be it further resolved that this resolution shall be declared emergency and shall be in full force effective immediately upon its adoption. And I have attached the invoice for $14,180 to this resolution for, you'll review.
Is there any questions on said resolution?
No.
Here and then, I would ask for a second.
I'll second it.
With the second, I would ask for a roll call, please.
Uh, Mr. Fleishman?
Yes.
Mr. Blevins?
Yes.
And Mr. Leeser's excused.
Yes, sir. Do you put them-
Yeah, I'm just trying to put everything in order.
I'm going to put this on top of that and then that-
That goes on-
Yep.
That's why I've been turning them. I'll take that.
Okay, yeah. I didn't go which way. Sure. Okay, sir, and please continue.
Uh, I have Resolution 2025-083. It's a resolution enacting regulations for the parking of vehicles on a designated street and right-of-way in Franklin Township, Franklin County, Ohio, referencing Peabody Avenue. Whereas the Board of Trustees of Franklin Township, Franklin County, Ohio, has determined that public safety and welfare would, would be served by the following parking regulations. And whereas the state of Ohio has granted the township the authority to adopt resolutions regulating the parking of vehicles on township roads pursuant to the Ohio Revised Code, Section 505.17. Whereas the regulation adopted herein do not conflict with the Uniform Traffic Act and are applicable only to the unincorporated areas of the township. Therefore, be, be resolved by the Board of Township Trustees of Franklin Township, Franklin County, Ohio, that the following resolution be and is hereby adopted. Section 1. No person shall stop, stand, or park any vehicle on both the east and west sides of Peabody Avenue, from Midland Avenue to Franklin Avenue, or Franklin Township Road, which is located in the unincorporated area of the township, including the right-of-way. Section 2. Owners of vehicles parked in violation of parking regulations enacted by this resolution will be notified by having a parking, parking ticket handed to the vehicle operator by the Franklin Township Police Department in a ma, in a manner apparent to the operator of the vehicle and/or receipt of a summons from the Franklin County Municipal Court, Clerk of Court. The ticket to be used pursuant to this resolution shall be the Ohio Uniform Traffic Ticket. Section 3. Pursuant to O R C Section 505.17E, parking infractions shall be considered criminal offenses and a person who commits such a violation shall be guilty of a minor misdemeanor. Section 4. Pursuant to O R C Section 505.17D, the board or its designated agent may order into storage any vehicle parked in violation of each regulation. The owner or any lien holder of a vehicle ordered into storage may claim the vehicle upon presentation of proof ownership, which may be evidenced by a certificate of title to the vehicle and payment of all expenses, charges, and fines incurred, incurred as a result of the parking violation and removal and storage of the Section 5. For violations of Section 1 of these parking regulations, the fine for first violation shall be $65. The fine for second violation shall be $90. And the fine for a third or more violation shall be $100. Fines may be paid personally at the Franklin County Municipal Court during business hours or mailed to the court at 375 South High Street, 64 Columbus, Ohio, 43215. Section 6. These regulations are subject to limitations, restrictions, and exceptions in the O R C Chapter 505, Sections 4511.01 and 4511.76, and Sections 4513.02 and 4513.37. Parking area regulated in the state of the borough shall be designated by the installation of traffic control devices conforming to O R C 4511.09. Vehicles and owners may be exempt, exempt from certain restrictions created by this resolution on holidays, enumerated in O R C Section 5110 and further specified in O R C Section 1.14. Section 8. The township administrator is directed to post regulations in five conspicuous public places in the township for 30 days and publishing the same for three consecutive weeks using at least one of the following methods: digital newspaper or print in general circulation in the township, on the official public notice website established under R C 125.182, and on the website and social media account of the township. Section 9. It is hereby found and determined that all formal actions of this board concerning and related to the passing of this resolution were taken in an open meeting of this board and in all deliberations of this board and any of its committees that resulted in such formal action took place in meetings open to the public in compliance with legal requirements, including O R C Section 121.22. This resolution shall be declared emergency and be effective immediately upon its adoption or as legally permitted by law.
If there's no further question in that long-length information, I know we have to read it, I would ask for a second.
I'll second it. Just a quick question, though, Steve. Just, I just want to make sure we're-
Yes, sir.
What paper do we have that we could put that in? Because there's no more West Side Messenger.
What we have done in the past, because it's less expensive, we have put in the Daily Reporter.
Okay.
And what's nice now is we have the option of being able to put it on the township website.
That's new.
For, yes. It was just passed. I can't think of the House bill.
Last year.
So we can put it on the website and the social media account for three consecutive weeks. And then I just posted on Firehouse 192, this building, the police department building, Capital Sitting Towing has been nice enough to post it for us, and the public library on Hang Avenue.
Okay. I'll second it.
With the second, I'd ask for a second, sir, when you're ready.
Uh, Mr. Fle-
Excuse me, I said that wrong. With the second, I'd ask for a roll call when ready.
Uh, Mr. Fleishman?
Yes.
Mr. Blevins?
Yes.
And Mr. Leeser's excused.
We're getting there.
That attached is the legal notice that we'll post.
Okay.
Then I have Resolution 2025-084. It's a resolution approving the OTARMA 2025-2026 Anniversary Contribution, which is the township's insurance company, basically. Be resolved by the Board of Trustees of Franklin Township, the authorized payment not to exceed $101,877 to the Ohio Township Risk Management Authority, OTARMA, for the 2025-2026 Annual Contribution Period effective May 1, 2025. Then be it further resolved that all formal actions of this board concerning and related to the adoption of this resolution were passed in an open meeting of this board and in all deliberations of this board and any of its committees resulted in such formal action, were in meetings open to the public in compliance with all legal requirements, including Section 121.22 of the O R C. This resolution shall be declared emergency and shall be in full force and effective immediately upon its adoption.
If there's no second, if there's no other questions, I'd ask for a second.
I'll second it.
Having the second, I'd ask for a roll call.
Uh, Mr. Fleishman?
Yes.
Mr. Blevins?
Yes.
And Mr. Leeser's excused. And then the invoice for recharge premium is attached. Then the last resolution I have is Resolution 2025-085. It's a resolution authorizing payments by the temporary deputy fiscal officer. Be resolved by the Board of Trustees of Franklin Township, Franklin County, Ohio, that the board approves the appointment of James Stevens to serve as a temporary Franklin Township Deputy Fiscal Officer to fulfill the duties of the fiscal officer in their absence according to Resolution 2025-038. Be it further resolved that per Resolution 2025-0- Be it further resolved that per Resolution twenty twenty-five dash zero three eight, this appointment is temporary and shall be rescinded into requests of the Board of Trustees. Be it further resolved that the Board of Trustees grants a temporary fiscal officer the authority to approve and sign vendor invoices totaling the amount of three hundred and eighty-two dollars and forty-eight cents from check number seven zero seven eight four to seven zero seven eight five, and the exhibits attached to the back of the resolution. Section one, all formal actions of this Board concerning and related to the adoption of this resolution were passed in an open meeting of this Board, and all deliberations of this Board and any of its committees that resulted in such formal actions were in meetings open to the public in compliance with all legal requirements, including section one two, one point two two, the O R C. This resolution shall be declared emergency and be in full force and effective immediately upon its adoption unless otherwise specified.
Mr. Stevens? Sir, are you in agreeance with this?
Yes.
Hearing that, if there's no further questions, I'd ask for a second.
I'll second it.
We now have a second. I'll make a comment prior to vote. The reason that we do this is because we do not have a fiscal officer that we're willing to show up to do the job. So we have to do this to have a way to do all the paperwork you're seeing, the checks to get paid, so this Township can continue to move forward. So with that being said, sir, I have a second on the floor. I would ask for a roll call when ready.
Uh, Mr. Fleishman?
Yes.
Mr. Blevins?
Yes.
Mr. Leeser is excused. And I just have a couple more things. I just found about about this, uh, late last week. One of our police officers, Matt Kidwell, uh, is going to receive through the Franklin County Sheriff's Office a life-saving award.
Wow.
Where, I got to see the video. There is a lady here in the Township, I believe in the Township, and she was choking. And Matt was first on the scene. And a long story short, he was able to dislodge the food that was in her throat, down her esophagus. And, uh, yeah, by the time our E M Ts and firefighters got here, the lady was coming back around. She was breathing. And, uh, so like I said, I found out about it late last week. So I think it might be nice that we bring Matt in to our next meeting.
Okay.
And acknowledge, uh, what he's done.
I'd like to comment on this. I haven't really shared in my own personal life, but I have problems swallowing. There are certain foods I can't. I've had to have three emergency surgeries because food gets stuck just before it goes out of the base into the stomach. And I know what that feels like. If you can't breathe, you can't drink, and et cetera. So, uh, from the other side of it, wow.
So I will make sure he's on, he's on the agenda for.
Sure. That'd be great.
And then two, two other things quickly. Just want to give the trustees injury updates. We have a firefighter, Cordelia Strad, who is on injury leave at this time. And we do have all his documentation from his physicians and medical confirming his injury, as well as, uh, we just had a police officer last week, Roger Myers. He, uh, he got injured as well, and we have the documentation on Roger. And I think what we're going to do with Roger is, uh, we have a letter from his doctor that says he could, he could start performing light duty. So that's fine. We have functions inside here that we can put him to work. Roger's on vacation the rest of this week. So he'll come in Monday, and we'll get all the light duty paperwork filled out, and, uh, we'll have that all taken care of.
Okay.
And that's, that's all I have for you, trustees.
Okay. Uh, Mr. Leeser is excused. He's not here today. Um, I don't have any, I think I spoke enough on a lot of subject matters that's dear to the heart. I don't have anything other than I'd like to thank everybody that has come tonight. It's a full room. Normally, we don't see the full room like this, and I think it's great. I would ask each of you, this is always recorded on YouTube, to highlight it, share it on your Facebook page if you can, if you copy the U L R, and allow other people to hear as we've explained what a Township-wide levy is, and let them see the ramifications of the choices that the Board has to make by closing one of the stations and actually physically giving layoff notices to six people. I will share it on my Facebook page and allow people to see that. I may try to see if Nicole can just break it down just for that segment, so you don't have to sit through an hour and forty-five minutes of the meeting to see that. But I do want to thank everybody for coming out tonight. Mr. Blevins?
Uh, we're actually really not done. We were supposed to adjourn into an executive meeting.
Sure.
But since Mr. Leeser is not here, I would ask, can we do that on the, what'd we say? We're doing it on Wednesday?
Uh, seventeenth.
The seventeenth?
I have no problem with that.
Could we move that, uh, something that I'm bringing to the Board? It's going to take five to ten minutes, and we can do it at the end of the meeting, just like we were going to do here, and it doesn't hold the people up.
Yes.
Um, we can just adjourn and go into the, there. But I, it's something that needs to be discussed.
Sure.
But it can definitely wait.
Do, do you want to do it, Mr. Blevins, before, if we have a special meeting at five thirty?
Oh, it's fine with me if you want to do it before. It was just that we were going to do it after, so I thought you wanted to do it after. We can do it, we can do it before. I don't think we need more than fifteen minutes.
Okay. What I was going to do is get through this before we went to the, um, before we went to the adjournment for this. So I wanted to ask all this so that people.
Okay.
Because the next one I'm going to do is I'm going to just open the floor for any questions. So that's why I was going through this.
Okay, so I guess I jumped ahead.
No, that's okay.
So I do have a comment, and, uh, I'll just say that just because I didn't show when it came time to sign those layoff sheets, that it bothered me. I was, I, it did bother me, and it bothered me a lot because I've got to work with these people. We put in some very nice things for this Township over this last summer behind, and, uh, me and other people were strong people to get these things rolling, and this fire department jumped behind. And for the first time, I believe, in the Township's history, we had a beautiful Christmas parade, which the Township Fire Department got behind. But again, I work for the taxpayers and the people who vote, and they voted to do this. And so I had, just as you heard John state, I had no choice but to sign it. So I didn't want, if it seemed as I was cold or didn't care, I definitely do care. I think we have great firemen. I state this all the time. We have wonderful police officers, too. The problem is, uh, sometimes when these people have to show up at your house, they're not someone you invite over just to come and visit. They're generally there for a purpose, and a lot of the times, it's not a good purpose. It's a purpose that you're in need. You need a police officer to come, or you need a, a fire truck to come. Your house is on fire, or you need to go, you're having an emergency, uh, and these guys personally, in the last two months, have came to my house and took care of me. And it was a beautiful thing. And that's really all I have to say. I just wanted it to be known that I didn't sign those papers hastily. It just had to be done. So that's all I ask, sir.
Usually, this service, when you need it, is when you're having your worst day. And, uh, I know, I'll share a little bit with me. My father's ninety-two years old, and I now have him living with me, and, um, he had taken a fall, and, uh, twice, um, our guys have had to come and take him to the hospital. And I greatly appreciate that because when something like that happens, um, the only thing you can think of, grab the phone, call nine one one. And I don't care how strong of a person you are, when it's your loved one, and you're seeing that, you, you don't think the same. My career started off as a firefighter, E M T, and, uh, I felt helpless. There was nothing I could do. And to hear those sirens in the distance coming, what a relief you feel that when they get there. And then the professionalism that they give and what they can do makes all the difference in the world. I allowed my emotions to get more to me tonight, sitting up here than I should have. It's just, I know me personally, my father means the world to me, and, uh, I was raised just by my father for the majority of my life, and, uh, it's very difficult to think, um, what would have happened just a short, few months ago, um, had they not been there? Him on the floor, not able to get up, and would we have, who would we have? I mean, I, I couldn't have got him in the car to get him to the hospital, so I don't know. It's just a lot of emotions of this job right now, of being able to have to tell people, I have to lay you off, I don't have a choice, please don't take it personally. And yes, I respect the job, and I respect the people that went out and voted, and, um, it's something that we have to do, as Mr. Blevins said. This is the part of the job that we have been asked to do, and it's what we do. The trustees, uh, we take our job seriously. We're elected by the body of the people, and, um, you have to separate your own personal feelings and actually vote on what's the best for the Township. If we don't have the funding, we don't have the funding. So at this time, I would like to open the floor if there's any questions regards today's meeting. And if we could keep them brief, that would be great. The floor is now open. If you have anything, signal by a hand raise. See and none, I will close the meeting, and I thank everybody.